Thank you.
Girl scout cookie pusher.
Yes, I am. I still got more at home too, so don't worry about running out.
Did you grant your daughters the price of most good and solid?
Well, they didn't. It wasn't my fault. I guarantee you that. You were supposed to get a badge or a hat or something. I hope they wear it was right. The youngest one just took the training wheels off her bicycle and found out she can fly. And I got video of her circling the neighborhood.
I see a lot of people on bicycles come down through my subdivision. Just people really want to get out.
Yeah, in this weather, God bless America, it's proven to the point where they can't.
It was brutally hot. Yes.
It wasn't. You hit ninety according to my friend.
Yes.
Yeah, they said we broke a hundred and thirty-three year old record or something like that on the weather last night.
I of course picked the day to bow my guard. And I thought, I really wish I could go to a barber. Because his sweat was just running off my head. I'm thinking, why me? Just going to shake my head. My head has got way too many stars and bones on it.
That would be a new look for you, for sure.
I'm thinking at this point, I'm gonna hit the nineteen seventies look. That's it.
Did you see in here? Should we reproduce this or is there anything in here that? Not, oh, yeah, there you go. Thank you, Katie.
I'm a nickel short of going to get me a sweet roll. This is gonna have to work.
You can have one of those. I may have a nickel in my drawer if needed here. Get your breakfast.
The city's. The city's ordinance, section three point two, says, "The provision of any ordinance, term, or other restriction that would prohibit an existing restaurant or retail food facility from providing pickup, drive-through, or delivery service is waived during this effective period of this order." Now, this is city. It's state law, right?
They're helpful, just mirrors the state law.
So, the state law basically says cities can enact ordinances that are more strict, but not less strict than the state law. So if the state law says, no margaritas to go through the drive-up window, then that's not covered over here.
A little nuances every day with this uncharted territory that we're in.
Well, you know.
Don't forget where you got it.
Well, thank you, sir. And people want to, I think, adhere to laws and guidelines, but if there's a wee bit of wiggle, there'll be some wiggling.
Yeah.
I don't fault them for that at all. But pre-mixed margaritas are available at any victim store.
Pre-mixed, yeah.
Yeah, so all you have to do is add ice.
But that would go in a bottle of this cap iron, yes?
That's right.
Yeah, so you'd be legal. I saw a picture. I got a picture of a brother of a guy on a horse, right? Driving up with a DJ at St. James'. Uh, probably lost his license along the way, so he just worked around it. Don't know. Uh, did you see anything in here that we need to discuss? Okay. Take a look here. Governor's budget is what we're looking at. And the impact of the federal. What's the name of that act? Splenty name, but anyways.
Does it care? The CARES Act?
It's like the new deal.
Boy, it's almost above me on the deal in dimension, I would think.
There's a gentleman, an author named Dean Koontz, who wrote a book back in nineteen eighty-one about a pandemic rate that was started in China, in Wuhan province. So, I'm not saying that he was a prophet or anything, but he did a, he's a good art, a good author, and good authors do a great deal of research into their novels in order to make a novel plausible enough that you buy into it as you're reading. And so I gotta get it because I'm a prolific reader. And so I, but the fact is, here's a guy that did that much research to write fiction. But then, then we, World Health Organization, our health industry, did not, didn't appreciate it, searched to see a little bit ahead or denied the reason. I guess that's it.
The new deal. The similarities suddenly.
Are discussed easily.
What the biggest, they had a new deal was the conservation, the CCP, WPA.
There was a lot.
Direct payments to systems. You know, probably a twelve hundred dollar check. It's kind of a new deal.
They're broke.
Huh?
They're broke.
Okay. You're never broke if you got a print press downstairs.
They're just gonna email you the first anymore.
Well.
Yeah.
All right. We better not start down that path. Okay.
Okay, so this is.
Why couldn't we do, why couldn't we front load it? Why couldn't we have a payroll tax holiday?
That would appear to me to make way too much sense.
You know, instead, they continue to collect payroll taxes and then they give people something.
It's called the rake. When you go gambling, it's called the rake. They rake off some of that. You never win the whole lot. It's like when you go out and buy a lottery ticket. Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna fund schools. Well, only ten percent of it goes to schools. The rest, nine percent goes to the overhead to administer the debt. So it's the rake. It's the house, the house.
Not having ever gambled, I will take your word.
I never gamble. It's always a sure thing.
Getting up in the morning is a gamble sometimes.
Yeah.
Pamela was the guy that ran for governor, who had to complete the executive secretary.
John Brunner.
There you go. I've been trying to think of that name for two days. That's what it's called. He only come and called.
By John. Nate Germax.
Germax. Thank you.
Now, I don't know if he sort of divested himself. I think I remember something about some kind of divestment that happened.
Here's something that should make us happy, Gab. When you talk about gambling. The, one, two, three, four, five. The sixth bullet point on the governor's budget amendment is "An additional one and a half million dollar general revenue to support the operations of, hold on, the Missouri Gaming Commission." I'm sorry.
So I, I watched the live stream in Missouri House for a while yesterday. I'm that big of a nerd.
How many Alka Seltzers would you take to get through that?
I mean, I had this window open. I was doing email and, you know, actually, I was working on the spreadsheet for the August primary, but I had them open over here. And they were doing a vote on this and they were calling representatives four at a time. The representative, the lady from the eighty-sixth or whatever, the gentleman from the forty-second, the gentleman from the one fifty-first.
To do, walk, write testimony before or against this?
No, to walk into the chamber, go to their desk, and press their vote button.
Oh, to keep the social distance.
And they all came in with masks on. And when the House session started, there was the Speaker and a couple of clerks in front, and they were wearing masks. There was the House photographer, the capital. I think I should know who that person was, but anyway. House Chamber of Photography, they were wearing that. The House, who's the second-in-command in the House? This, I think his name is Rob Vescovo, but, I mean, he was standing in the back. He was wearing masks. And maybe a couple others. And then they were all wearing masks, but the chamber was empty. And so they had the camera behind, you know, shooting down straight toward the back of the House chamber. And there, people had come in, you know, they'd go to their desks and they'd leave off-camera.
Boy, but that took forever.
It did. I went, left for lunch at one-thirty, came back two-thirty. We're still voting.
What were they voting on yet?
That.
House Bill number two oh one four.
And did it pass?
I think so. I never followed up. I was like, who cares? Who cares? I gotta do what I gotta do.
It's a five-point-eight billion supplemental budget. Now, the funds, it doesn't say the available funds. The funds are a result of two federal coronavirus stimulus bills passed by Congress in the last few weeks. So, are they, they already feel like if they're gonna get five-point-eight billion dollars from the federal government, and this is their attempt to expand it appropriately?
Yeah, they're.
I mean.
They're past the date for introducing bills, number one. So what kind of, you know, I suppose there's always, they're talking about having a special session, of course, because, you know, they'll probably have to do a thousand bills, especially. All the ones that they didn't get addressed, it could be, could be a real nightmare.
Yeah, it kind of already is.
So that's House Bill number what?
This is second regular session, Senate substitute for Senate committee substitute for House committee substitute for House Bill number two oh one four.
So Senate substitute for Senate committee substitute, House committee substitute for House Bill two oh one four.
And it's roughly twenty-seven pages.
I did my math right. That's about nine hundred and twenty dollars, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars per session.
Six million into whatever it is?
Six, what, five-point-six billion.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Five-point-eight billion.
So that would give us roughly like forty, no, no. If they, if they force a gap by.
Oh, I can't believe. It's gotta be more than that.
I may have done the math wrong. My calculator ran out of zeros.
You don't have a federal calculator? Okay. Okay, an additional forty-seven, about forty-seven and a half million dollars of federal funds and twenty million dollars of general revenue to provide a pandemic stipend for state employees working in a facility with a positive COVID-nineteen case. So, there is the hazardous duty pay that you were speaking of earlier. I mean.
Might be.
Well.
Thank you. Has been done.
Okay, thank you. You're ahead of me.
Is everybody still on?
They still watching, a couple of people. Same people that watch them all day are still watching pretty much.
Hopefully, they're not watching. They're just.
They may just have to be listening.
Background, white noise.
So what was that that you sent for the STIP?
Well, it is that an additional forty-seven and a half million dollars of federal funds and twenty and a half million dollars of general revenue to provide a pandemic stipend for state employees working in a facility with a positive COVID-nineteen case. How many state employees do you suppose it are?
Gods.
Well.
Have you ever looked at the Blue Book?
There's a reason it's.
It makes me blue.
Thousands and thousands of state employees.
Well, okay, so is there a million state of loans?
No, probably not.
Is there?
I would say it's measured in the tens of thousands.
So, is there a hundred thousand?
Might be.
Okay, so we're looking at about seventy million dollars. So if there was.
It'd be seven hundred dollars per employee.
If there was. If there's a hundred thousand.
Faith.
But that, that would assume that every state.
It's the legislative report. You guys are Missouri Association of Counties. So there's another summarized.
How's it, man?
Are you ready?
I read it. It doesn't, it only specifies one bill by number, but it does mention, I think the bill, the reauthorization. So anyway, just let you guys.
Boy, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whoa.
Isn't this what they call the green striper? She's bringing out scarves.
Yeah, we used to get it in the mail.
Oh, okay. And I'm disturbed that the casinos are getting, I think, one-point-five million dollars.
We just.
Oh, did you just say?
Yeah, we, we had a discussion of gambling. So she's never gambled. And I say, I don't gamble either, because when I did, it's a sure thing. I'm gonna lose. So we, I read that and, and. Yeah.
That's sad.
Additional one-point-five in general revenue to support the operations of the Missouri Gaming Commission as it has seen an anticipated loss of revenue.
When I saw the gaming, I was thinking like deer tags and turkey. That's what I was thinking. And then I'm like, oh, my God. No, it's really seamless. That's not pretty much use of our money.
Probably keeping their, well, it's not like a lot, but probably keeping their staff on board until seeing over.
But then that's a separate, that's that separate PPE that they can get from the federal government. Why does Missouri General Fund have to go towards this? If they're getting the federal money.
I see your point.
Have you called down, uh, Don Mayhew about that yet?
Not yet.
Yeah, maybe you should.
Yeah.
I'm sure that he has said it's absolutely stony.
Yes, I'm sure. So anyway, that was just.
Be a tough time to be in Jeff City, wouldn't it? Pamela's telling us about the vote they took on these, and they could bring in four at a time.
After that, that, that somebody says, yeah, it's, oh. As slow as it is, the process, so.
Yeah. How's your office functioning? Was the door locked? Is it?
Perfect. It's great. Especially having the license office closed, so no one needs that immediate receipts. So people can just drop in a drop box and then we can, we usually email the receipts. So they have that option anyway, which is just fast, but.
So do you suppose the License Bureau is accommodating in fact that people can't get in there and get their licenses, either renewed or new licenses? Are they, is there a certain forgiveness?
Well, there, that, that was a Governor Parson. So yeah, that's, that's.
Sixty days?
Sixty days. People are still trying to renew their licenses. I have no idea why they close. They close for one week. So they'll open up next Monday. So it's not as if they're following these, you know, shelter in place guidelines. I mean, they, they don't have to because they're essential, but that's not why. I'm not sure why they close, because it was just for one week.
Well, you can do that online for the most part anymore. But the funny thing is, if you get like a vanity plate, you do all that online, you still have to go out there and pick it up.
Yeah, but I can see where the license staff would be vulnerable to.
Why not close for two weeks or three weeks or four? Why that one week? That, that's, that's.
Will the governor maybe be closing when he reevaluates next week? Don't wonder.
Maybe. So, so they're, they're closed this week and next week, we might see an increase in needing to get people, you know, that receipt, although we can do it by email.
Well, if they come to the door, are they letting them in too?
We don't. We're not letting them in. I'll, I greet them on, in the vestibule and we can take care of business there.
Oh, and you can transact without them ever coming in the building?
Yes.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Good for you. So they get the job done without risk of exposure or exposing staff?
Exactly. Yep, yep. It's our number one priority right now, so.
How's your little guy getting along with no school?
Woo, he's, he wants to go back to school. Now, he misses his fun, misses any work. He misses his fun, so.
It's tough.
It is. It's.
Oh, man.
Yep, it's, it's gonna be, I hope they go back. They really do.
Well, I see. Probably not. April the twenty-fourth is stay-at-home. It's in until then, and normally school's out early May, mid-May?
May eighteenth, I think, was the last day. I'd like to see them extend it into summer.
Well, that would be a consideration, I suppose. We were having a conversation in the mornings, how do you know when it's over? One case could reignite the whole thing, you know, so. Particularly in the school.
Yes, that's true. That's true. We're doing a great job now, so.
So far, so good.
Yes.
For Phillips County.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Faith. We'll read every word of this.
Okay.
Fifty-seven thousand. Missouri State Department.
Fifty-seven thousand divided into about seventy million. Ten thousand each.
Or what are you guys talking about? We're discussing the question that.
Hundred and twenty-two of these.
Why?
You, you don't have a federal computer either.
Yeah.
You can, you need something to lie on those.
Well, I mean, seven million divided by.
Seventy, about seventy million.
Ooh, excuse me. Yeah, seventy million divided by seven thousand would be a thousand. So it's gonna be about a hundred, one thousand, two, two and twenty dollars.
And that's for
a stipend for, for state employees working in a facility with a positive coronavirus case.
State employees working in a Corona-positive department.
There you go.
We're fifteenth in the nation, by the way, for most, for most state employees.
Fifteen, you mean for the absolute number or for capita?
The absolute number. According to this website.
Good grief, that must.
So do you think we're governing.com?
Sort of how they. But how, how that is on per capita.
Hundred and five people per government. Per full-time employee, full-time employee. You said fifty-seven thousand?
By far, education is the highest, by far.
Yes.
That would be.
Elementary and secondary. So they're counting teachers in school districts in that number.
Oh, well, that kind of changes everything.
Those kind of higher education is second.
Yeah, I would.
This is not Missouri. This is nationwide.
I would fail to see how elementary and secondary employees are employees of the state.
So this must be.
Well, they, they, you can't.
They're not.
And that's why I was saying about the License Bureau at the same time, they are all private contractors. They are, they, they're not.
The, ours is. I assume the rest are. You know, for a while it was. Acorn, or what did they call their core?
Core, yeah.
Yeah, what a shame. That, we, Mel Carney kept that going for a long time. But it got away.
I find one thing interesting here, Senator Huff gives direction of the following line. "Changes were made by the committee Senator Huff gives direction for the receipt and dispersal of federal funds into the state treasury be remitted to the local and state agencies within ten days, with the exception of Jacksons and Santos County where they're going directly to the Fed." How's that gonna, how's that gonna happen? They're gonna get the funds from the Fed, disperse that within ten days to local government? Or the local and state agencies?
Well, that won't be local government, certainly.
Are they, well, local and state agencies? Are we a local agency?
They are not.
So by local agencies, they are.
The hotel is in Florence, Missouri. They're gonna convert that to a hundred-bed care site, treat victims.
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education encompasses sixteen pages. On page, that's two twenty-seven hundred. Twenty-seven hundred. In D E C.
Okay.
Okay, and we got job descriptions in here like teacher aide, administrative assistant. And I would think of like B W Robbins State School.
I'd say.
Okay, so the county might have something like that. That's a very rough estimate. University of Missouri goes on.
If I may interject here, interrupt your thought here for a minute, I'm reading the supplemental budget and one of the bullets is additional two hundred million federal funds to higher education and workforce development. Distribution of higher education under Corona, that really, you know, security act. That would mean the money that he cut out of the state, but more for the university system is gonna be.
Going back in.
A whole lot of it, yeah.
Didn't he cut a hundred and eighty million? Now there's two hundred million.
Going back in, so the university would be, uh.
Insulated.
Actually, Drew.
You know, why is anyone receiving a windfall out of the calamity?
I know, there's some people who are actually gonna make more money than.
Private equity firms may be the big, in this area, if they, if they don't rent them out of it. I mean, because they're losing money on paper?
You don't lose money, can you sell it? And if you're buying, selling on wins, stock market, you're gambling. You should be reimbursed by the gaming commission.
Okay, here's another bullet point that's of interest. An additional one billion, seventy-one million federal funds to the office administration for distribution to units of local government for necessary expenses incurred due to the COVID-nineteen public health emergencies provided by the Act. Uh, how does?
How do we keep track of our additional expenses incurred?
Well, there's a fair question, Pam, and no doubt it's gonna come into play. And consistent with one piece of advice I saw someplace that said, record, record, you know, just kinda like to see my stuff, record everything. We probably need to have a conversation.
And, thank you, that, my turn?
Yeah. That's a lot of money.
Well.
Well, and that's.
How many units of local government are we talking about? Or do you wanna just divide it by the population figure that per person, that person's local government gets?
That would be an interesting number.
The bad thing is the impact, but right now appears to be major metropolitan or just here in Missouri, we have two major metropolitans, but, but then we have minor Columbia, Springfield, Jacksons.
Yeah, speaking of Springfield, I thought it was on the TV, they gave the case of Pike County. Green County shows you. Is that Springfield and Green County?
Yes, I thought Green County had seven or eight.
Poses?
Yeah.
I think it's maybe that.
Well, yeah, last time I checked, it's seven or eight.
Well, that's, well, I was thinking too, but on the TV, it's your show, you know.
Are they saying deaths?
No, I don't think, Pam, but I may have. But I'm sure so. Other than treating it with. Okay.
Andrew's got a story of already. On meeting with smart.
What can we talk about?
County Commission first look at anticipated COVID-nineteen revenue shows following received.
Here, this is also one I wanna keep around. Twenty million to Department Economic Development for Community Development Lockdown Program. Assistance, such as activities such as acquiring quarantine treatment facilities, testing and diagnosis at fixed or mobile locations, a hospital could probably be in line for that, and delivering meals to quarantined individuals, well, we don't. Very big total in that one. Department Economic Development.
All these, all these various agencies and parts and everything, all involved in this and it just turns into bureaucratic. Competing agencies.
Public safety gets low, they improve the same kind of stuff.
I guess this will get it out there better, quicker, but not necessarily. You just gotta get this money out here, we just gotta throw this money.
The problem is, you're, that's the only way to get it out, it's through the arts.
But Pam's idea that, 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 uh, payroll. The payroll taxes will eliminate you net.
Unless you're not working, you don't have payroll taxes. Most people don't need it for work.
Maybe people who have the money will be more inclined to give it to private, to charity.
That's happening.
I mean, that's a possibility.
It's happening. Some of the neat stuff, some of the movie stars have been doing that, they like to report on that, and that's kinda. Uh, who was it? The guy that founded Twitter?
Jack Dorsey.
How much did he, uh?
A big lot.
In the Bs, the billions.
Was it a billion?
It's twenty-five percent of his value in that. Of his net worth, and it was his holdings in a little square thing, you put it square, they call it.
Oh, the thing you put on your phone?
And swipe card.
Card, yeah. He, it's the, isn't that guy that spoke here at the university? He's local town, and I think his father was a professor here. When I'm hurrying, when, is his name?
Huh? Come on.
Yeah, that's the guy, uh, he was in, uh, speech theater. He was looking for students. Just billions of dollars.
Working in a facility with a positive COVID-nineteen case. So what are you talking about? Prison?
Well.
State prison?
No, I guess if you work for, um, Attorney General's Office or the State Treasurer's Office, and, and you are going to work and everything.
What about students' office?
Well, that state.
She do.
I haven't been to either, I don't wanna. Your staff, do you know Pam?
Yeah, I see.
Can't take her. Back here in the break room this morning. Yeah, she comes down that way, staring.
Yeah, she's working, huh?
Well, yeah, she's, they've got three off, three on.
Oh.
Uncertain departments office, and the ones when they're off, they're supposed to be available by phone. Because some of them deal more with criminal or civil or whatever, you know.
Some must-do functions.
Yeah.
Essential functions, I guess. So I, so if you're gonna, if you've gone to work for the past three weeks and then you find out that one of your coworkers tested positive, would then you get a extra dollar an hour for working in a hostile environment? Back pay. When do you know, when, when are you, when were they? When could they have been, um, diagnosed or, I guess you know when they were diagnosed, but really, when did they contract? When were they? I think open to just a disaster. Just got a lot of money, let's, let's, let's spend it. Need to spend it in a hurry before, uh, inflation eats a half of it up. That's a lot of money.
Too late.
Two point two trillion into a fifteen, eighteen trillion dollar economy. What is it? It's huge.
The White House asked for two hundred and fifty billion more. And that was voted out in the House of Representatives.
I keep going back to All in the Family when they sang, "We could sure use a man like Herbert to do for Eddie."
Craver, ride in a chicken in every pot.
So far, the biggest tragedy is the loss of John Prine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had never seen even a picture of him before, I, I didn't know what he looked like. I sure remember his tan speedboat last year. He was, he was as prolific as William Allison, probably.
Boy, the first album of his, I believe, was in nineteen seventy-four. And I've seen him in concert at least four times, it could be five, I've seen him at least four times.
Oh, wow.
Just one of those kinda guys, you know, just can turn a phrase, you know. I was reading an article last night, I was interviewing with him, he said, "What was your, what was your favorite lyric?" It was a song called Sam Stoller about a guy returning back from Vietnam during Vietnam War. Said, "There's a hole in Danny's arm where all the money goes." You know that? And he said, "I was looking for a phrase that just, just gave, just sounded hopeless." Like, so the next line had to be something totally hopeless, and then it, so the next line was, "Jesus Christ died for nothing," I suppose. That's just, he said, "How more hopeless could it be than that?"
Did he have some underlying help?
He had cancer twice as long.
Oh, so his, his beexcess was fairly well shot.
So did he succumb to COVID or anything?
Did, yeah. Died at, uh, Penneville Hospital in Nashville.
How old?
Seventy-three. Married Irish lady, said, so they lived in Ireland half the year. And the place they lived was just south of Galway, so it was two grocery stores and nine pubs. Then he wanted to go one or two of the pubs, said, "You know all the businesses going on in that town."
I wonder who the no votes were.
I don't know, I guess I could probably pull that up, you reckon?
Um, yeah, the Journal of the House, who's, who's approved the Journal, I guess.
Let's go to this new jab here.
House dot mo dot gov.
Okay, right there we go.
Click on legislation. Okay, so, um, you can search, if we're pretty sure this was twenty-fourteen, just type that in.
Two oh one four?
Yeah, just search it.
What legislation is, yeah, that's it.
I'm sorry.
What legislative district you live in?
Uh, Jason Chitt.
Jason Chitt.
Yeah, so Don Mayhew has, he's by himself, he's the only candidate to file for the one twenty-first.
Is that, wow, interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jason Chittman has a Democrat, Teresa Schmidt from Steelville.
She recognized him before.
Yeah. And, um, Robert Ross is termed out, so I think there's three Republicans.
Unobeying.
Yeah, there's three Republicans vying for Robert Ross's seat, and then, um.
Did Robert get competition in the Senate electoral?
Yes, I think there are three Republicans and maybe a Democrat. I looked at it, I was looking at it yesterday. He's the thirty-third or the thirty-first, I forget.
What about Tom?
And Tom is termed out too, and so Bruce Sassman and two other people have filed on the Republican ticket, and then I think there's a Democrat.
Did Ray Schwartz file for that seat for him?
Do, I don't think so.
Changed his mind. I know Bruce quite well. I was in a dormitory with him in college.
Is that right? Yeah, and this family own a mortuary on it?
They did, and he's sold it and retired now.
Oh, okay.
Signed by a House Speaker, signed by President Putin, delivered to governor.
Every kid's, they got a farm.
Would this be where I might see the roll call truly agreed to and finally passed?
Yeah, but.
I was looking over here.
Yeah, see, the House Journal.
Presentation outdoors last summer.
Scroll down on the taskbar over there.
This one?
Yeah.
Guys.
No, roll, no, that's a three-eighteen roll call on that one.
Here's a, here's a four-eight, sold out, a hundred dollars a ticket.
Yeah, see, we.
I was going, I, I was a big fan of it, it was an hour or.
Well, click on the link, yeah.
Oh, there. I went online, but I think it was sold out.
Oh, here we go.
His wife were in prayers when that Cox.
Now, this is wrong. No, it's four-eight, okay. Scroll down, let's see if it's the counts. See, there's four no's.
I don't think I can vote for him, but.
He'll sit down at the bottom, the nose will be down at the bottom.
It, it comes over with Ross, see?
Okay, that's, that's the right one. So who voted no?
Lavasko.
He said he felt a little bit about this one.
And Hearst. And Poe. Yep. Poe goes for.
Well, there's a hic up there.
Shannon County.
Priors is doing carryouts.
Priors, I think they are.
Must be lunchtime, that sounds really good.
Now, day goes by that Priors doesn't sound good.
That's a good point.
What is the outside game? Does that mean they weren't there?
I don't know. Moon, Mike Moon. Okay, I'm not surprised. Tom Hearst, Mike Moon, and, um.
Poe.
Poe and.
Hearst, Tom Hearst.
And then who was that down at the bottom? The first one we saw, who voted?
Tom Hearst.
No, no, down, down at the bottom, Lavasko.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, uh, absent is the A.
There's a vacancy out there.
Now. So we got a lot of information there.
Yes.
Can I buy some further insult? Are you going, yes? Okay.
Oh, we're going to see what it was. One seven.
We ready to eleven-thirty to kill the live feed?
Oh, yeah, we probably could.